In 04 a.m. on July 18th. And our agenda goes something as follows with we will open with public comment. And then superintendent and chair remarks on the Mystic School HVAC project. Elementary literacy update. And then we will have a consent agenda with consideration of approval of a Murphy Fund Foundation grant consolidation, acceptance of a $7,595 in kind donation from the Ambrose Parent Association for an Ambrose Elementary School sign. Consideration of approval of dispersal of the goodness, I'm reading this of the activity account fund balance for the class of 2019. Then we have report update and action items for consideration of approval of a curb cut at the 1113 Irving Street property. Also WHS facility projects update, consideration of recommended capital planning priorities, a preliminary year end financial report, consideration of the 2024-25 Whitson's breakfast and lunch fee increase, and consideration of changing the March 2025 Professional Development Day, a first reading or approval of the Student Opportunity Act, and presentation of the superintendent's self-evaluation. Then we have anticipated future agenda items, future meeting dates, and adjournment. So with that, I would move us on back to public comment. And just see, so. Public comment shall be for a period of 20 minutes. Any citizen wishing to speak before the committee shall identify themselves by name and address and shall speak for no longer than three minutes. And all remarks will be addressed through the chair of the meeting. And it public comment is not a discussion, a debate, nor a dialogue between citizens and the community. It's a citizen's opportunity to express their opinion on issues of school committee business. And written comments longer than three minutes may be presented to the school to the committee before or after the meeting for our review and consideration at an appropriate time. And the address is as below, school committee at WinchesterPS.org. With that, let me just see. I see we have some attendees and some raised hands for public comment. So I would ask Mr. Hopcroft, could you help with timekeeping?
Actually, I think Tim Matthews had offered to do that as well, but.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I just did. I didn't. I think you were right. I missed that. I forgot about that, so.
I've got the timer up.
Okay. That would be awesome.
Mr. Mayor, do you mind controlling the attendees? Questions and elevating or allowing to talk?
First up, I think we have Mr. Vernalia. I'm going to promote him now.
And, oh, okay, great. I was about to say for our remote meetings, if everybody could also turn on their cameras, that would be awesome. So thank you, Mr. Vernalia.
Good evening, good morning, excuse me. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. My name is Brian Vernalia. I live at 19 Sergeant Road. I'm coming to you tonight. I'm this again this morning, I apologize. I'm vice chair of the planning board. I'm also the planning board liaison to the school committee. I'm coming in regard to the curb cut at 1113 to 13 Irving, which is on your agenda. I want to state upfront, I have no official opinion on this matter. A curb cut is the domain of the select board. And if it's on to property owned by the school committee, it's on the domain of the select board and the school committee. Down the road, a potential subdivision which could take place there would be the domain of the planning board who administer subdivision control law. So very briefly to that end, whatever recommendations or decisions you make regarding a curb cut and property access via the curb cut, it would be helpful if at some point in time you could put that as a memo or a summary and send it to the planning board so that if at some point in time subdivision comes request comes before us, we can have any feedback from you. Of course, I hope that if such a thing were to happen, you would also be as a butters, be able to give feedback. But I think the more feedback we can get if that were to happen would be great. Again, no official opinion on a curb cut, of course. And of course, no opinion on a potential subdivision at this time, as we reviewed nothing and seen nothing. Just want to ask for your feedback upfront and early on. Thanks so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Can I ask just a point of information real quick, Karen, Brian, before we lose him? This isn't intended to be the back and forth, but given he's here, you know, representing he's a vice chair of planning board, I just want to clarify something. Brian, you were saying if it's town property, that decision around curb cuts flows through the town side. If it's school property, I believe you said it flows through both the school committee and the town. I wanted to ask you to just clarify. At my understanding, if it's school property, then the decision rests with the schools. If it's town, it rests with the town. Are you saying that is the planning board of the opinion that if it's school property, the decision rests with both, or is it not just with the schools?
I'm making no official statement. Curb cuts are the domain of the select board. If it's a curb cut on to this school committee, if the school committee property presumably you would have some say. Planning board has no say on either one of those matters, so I certainly don't want to opine on who has final jurisdiction. I just wanted to get heads up that if a potential subdivision were to come, the planning board would have say so that your feedback would be valuable on that. And allowing access to that subdivision through school committee property would be something that the planning board would want to know about.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure we're clear about the use of the word and or or. But I get it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, next up, we have, it's like Erica Walsh will promote now.
Looks like Erica has been elevated.
Yeah, okay, she just sent you. All right, hello, Erica. Thank you, Ms. Walsh.
Good morning. This is Erica Walsh, 64 Wedgmere Avenue. Thank you for your time and your invaluable effort serving our community. In the past few months, there's been a great deal of concern in the news about the effects that smartphones and social media are having on our youth. There's mounting evidence that the past decade's traumatic rise in mental health issues among children and teenagers is linked to the ubiquity of smartphones and social media. I am here today representing a group of proactive parents and caregivers dedicated to addressing technology use among children and teens. Our goal is to collaborate with you in shaping policies and enforcement strategies of Winchester schools in the coming years. In June of this year, the PTA from all five district elementary schools ran a survey to families asking if they support device-free schools in the elementary schools. The results were overwhelming. Ninety-three percent of families support personal device-free schools, including the use of smartwatches. I'd be happy to share the data with you following this meeting. On a national level, more evidence supports that school administrations from across the country are moving forward toward phones-free schools. On June 19th, the Los Angeles Unified School District Board of Education voted to ban students from using smartphones, removing devices out of 429,000 students during the school day in the large second largest school district in the U.S. A week later, the nation's largest school district, New York City Public Schools, announced that the district is poised to also ban students' cellphones used during the school day, citing that phones have gone from a distraction to an addiction for many of the city's more than 900,000 students. Both stories follow widespread calls to cut down on social media and smartphone use among young people as concerns over their worsening mental health rise. Earlier this spring, the U.S. Surgeon General calling on Congress to require warning labels on social media similar to those that appear on tobacco and alcohol products. We seek to better understand what policies and procedures are already in place regarding the use of phones and similar devices and their use during school hours. We urge the school committee to consider implementing a bell-to-bell phone-free policy at Winchester schools, using tools such as yonder pouches to improve student compliance. We've seen the incredible impact the literacy design team has had in Winchester, bringing an important issue to the whole community, and we think a similar approach would be advantageous advantageous model for personal device-free schools in Winchester. Thank you so much for your time on this important issue.
Thank you very much.
Last public comment, we have Ms. Zeremba. Go down.
Ms. Bowlin, essay, can I ask Ms. Walsh if she could forward that statement to us? Because there was some mention of tools in her remarks I couldn't quite catch, so I'd be interested in reviewing that if she could forward that to the school committee address you shared at the outset.
Thank you very much. And if I if if she missed that comment in the transition, then I can get that to her.
Hello, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Stephanie Zeremba. I live at 38 Park Avenue. And I wanted to join today to make comment about the ongoing literacy issues and concerns that this committee has been facing. My family moved to Winchester almost six years ago, and our primary factor for moving here was the reputation and our believed quality of the schools and of the public education. We have placed our trust fully in this school committee and this administration to take care of our most precious thing in our entire lives, which is our child. And we've maintained that trust, my husband and I, even as we've heard concerning things about literacy curriculum and wondered if our good reader was actually okay. We got the devil scores. We heard educators telling us everything's okay. And we're now panicking because we have a rising third grader who loves to read, but has become very resistant to and shows things, certain tendencies that I don't know if are concerning. And I'm coming here to tell you that we are panicking because we've lost our trust. If I still had trust that everything was okay and her teachers were telling me she's doing great, I would feel completely comfortable. They are the experts, I am not. But I have lost my ability to have that feeling. We're heading into a critical period in her development, her education, and we don't know what to do. We don't have time for lengthy deliberation. We need parents of K through five in particular. We need confidence regained. We need answers. We need actions right now. And so I implore you to please not wait any longer than remotely possible. All hands on deck. This is critical right now for parents of young children. And I will say, as Ms. Side, I know the school committee does not control donations, but it is hard to see a donation for a new sign at Ambrose being considered when we have funding problems in the school and we are failing some of our students on basic literacy. Again, I know that you don't control that, but optically, that feels not great. So I really am looking forward to what the committee can do going forward and working with the administration and getting us back on track and getting the confidence back in our literacy programs. Thank you.
Okay. With that, I see no further hands for public comment. Mr. Matthews, would you agree?
I I actually, I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know. It's possible I don't have that view because I.
I agree.
Okay. Thank you.
No other hands are raised.
I just wanted to make sure. Okay, I am not missing something. So, okay, so with that, then I will close public comment. And hold on.
By the way, I only have my camera off because my connection was getting a little wonky, so I just didn't want I didn't want you guys to freeze up. I'm sorry about that, still here.
Yeah, no worries. I'm just I'm shifting my screens around. Okay. Chair. I'm shifting my screens around so I can see things. Okay. All righty. Okay. Therefore, we will continue on with superintendent and chair remarks. Dr. Hackett, do you want to go first, or do you want me?
And I take it you want in that order. No, why don't you go ahead?
Okay, all righty. With the Mystic School HVAC project update, I have watched the select board meeting on Monday, the July, Monday, July 15th, and Mystic HVAC was discussed at this meeting. Select board had decided, I believe on June 26th, to move ahead with further design development on the project. And ARPA funding had been applied of 150,000, of which 30,000 has been spent. So once the updated design info has come out, the select board would like to have a joint meeting with the school committee. And we will talk about that a little bit later during future agenda items for our planning purposes. Any questions? I also I also made the Zoom Zoom small so I could see my computer screen.
But I would I would just add, I didn't get see that whole discussion at the select board table, Madam Chair, I saw the back half of it. I think a joint meeting would be helpful. It seemed to me from watching some of the back and forth, there actually may be some misunderstandings among board members about why we haven't already had a joint meeting.
Actually, I would comment that, yeah, I was, I actually had that in my notes, but didn't comment, but didn't raise that as a point. And you can add on to this if you see fit. But with respect and having not had a joint meeting just yet, I think it was important for the school committee to have a conversation on its own first and be able to discuss among ourselves, first of all. And also, also to have a complete have a more a more substantive development or design development so that we have a better understanding of some of the questions that have been raised and so that we can have a more fulsome discussion with select board at a later date.
I agree with you 100%. And I would just add that my understanding is the the urgency, the the interest that was expressed last month in having a joint meeting with the board was so that we would vote to approve the project. And it is never really in the interest of the school committee to gather quickly on short notice to vote to approve something that we don't yet fully understand as a board we understand and we've had the opportunity to talk about. So I don't think, as far as I know, no member of this committee has registered any disapproval or reluctance to have a joint meeting with the select board on this. We simply wanted to have a conversation first. We've had that. Given some of the materials that were attached to our agenda today, I would just respectfully point out, going back months ago, this when this was first pitched to the select board, there were two key elements or two key concerns about Mystic present day that were to be addressed. The first was the reliability of the original, I'll call it ancient steam system, and we're talking 1923, which exists in, you know, about half the building. That was one issue. And everything that's been presented to us to date addresses that because it isolates that piping and proposes a new electrified split system VRF approach. That's fine. But there was this other element of the project we all heard about at our meetings, and we got emails from folks, which was how cold some of those upper level rec spaces are at the top of the hill, even when things are quote, working. And we've heard directly from the engineer that this project does not address that. So that is sort of one of the elephants in the room that I look forward to talking with the board about. But I'm pleased that they're they're moving, they're moving the ball forward a little bit on this because I think they should. So happy to be a part of a joint meeting and figure out how to keep it moving and just be sure we're accomplishing everything we've told the public we need to accomplish.
Ms. Bergstrom, did you have anything?
I just would echo Mr. Nixon's comment that if the select board feels the need for a joint meeting at this time, that I think we should go ahead and make ourselves available to do that on this project because this we've received now lengthy memo from the town manager's office on this to both the select board and the school committee. And if there's still questions outstanding about how one board or the other feels about their position on moving forward the project at this time, it seems the most efficient use of our time at this point would be to all meet together so that we're not bouncing back and forth board to board.
My opinion as well, so. Now we have information in our hands. Or we will have information in our hands. Okay, Mr. Hopcroft.
Yeah, I might just add that, you know, I'm supportive of meeting during a joint meeting. I do very much appreciate the opportunity that you gave us to consider this, you know, as a as a school committee first, because it was very unclear, as I mentioned at in our meeting, what we went through this, you know, what problem we were solving here. Because as Mr. Nixon notes, you know, we have been hearing a lot about being cold in the annex of part of the building, and yet the solution was somewhere different. And so, you know, as we've had the time to really dig into this and understand it, it's there's a few different projects that were intertwined here. And so there's this, you know, this other project that maybe is more critical than the cold, and it sounds like there's other solutions being put forth with the windows and temporary units to address some of the cold issues. And maybe they can fix the cold when the steam, you know, there's less steam going to the leaky pipe. But it was just very unclear, and I don't think it would have been a productive meeting to have had before we understood, you know, what we were trying to solve. And so I think we're in a much better position and do look forward to that.
Okay, and just to close the loop on that. We'll all be working with Beth Rudolph and with Michelle Pryor, Ms. Pryor, to find a date that will work for all of us or for as many of us as possible. Mr. Matthews?
So I just wanted to say, I think on a larger level, it'll be good to have the meeting with the select board. I hope that when we do that, we can sort of have a conversation about the use of the building. I don't expect that we'll have any resolution, but I think that, you know, sort of having an initial start to a conversation about, you know, sort of the importance of that building and the programs that happen in the building and sort of ongoing use of the building. The conversation between the the select board and the school committee, it might also be a great opportunity since it is so rare that we have that opportunity to start a conversation about that building. Obviously, I know that we have a master plan process in flight, but at the same time, I think, you know, it's, there are obviously budget concerns, and there are also sort of concerns about the usage of the building and the programs that are there and the potential future needs that the the school department has. So I hope that, you know, obviously not sort of trying to anticipate or jump the gun on the the planning process, but just sort of talking about, because I think what I'm trying to say on some level is that I've gotten actually a lot of feedback from folks who have kids who are little or, you know, need after-school programming of the sort of integral nature of the programs that take place in that building right now. It has been pointed out to me multiple times that it's one of the only places in town where there's an opportunity to have kids in care until 6:00 p.m. And for a lot of working parents, that's something that they absolutely need. So just wanted to to flag that and sort of talk about this on a more, you know, obviously, I think 100% supportive of moving forward with any repairs that we need to make the building comfortable and safe. But at the same time, I think there's also a larger conversation about, you know, expenditure of resources and sort of longer range planning for that building and the programs that it houses.
And I'll just say, I think these are topics that we can all be discussing at the joint meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, superintendent remarks?
Well, good morning, everyone. I'm only saying good morning because I listened to Mr. Nagle make the good evening, and I have been in my head saying, say good morning, not even because this is an unusual time for us to meet, so it's a little bit of an adjustment. So so thank you to him. I wanted to just to mention a couple of things. There was a, one of the public comments was in around donation for the Ambrose sign, front of the building sign. And I wasn't entirely clear what the point of the speaker was, just wanted to mention that those funds are from an outside source, actually from the parent association at Ambrose. And they are actually donating the sign, including the installation to this to the school department. So there aren't any funds that are going from the operating budget to that. So I'm and I'm not, again, I'm not entirely sure if I'm addressing the concern with that, but we're, you know, we are not in, we are not putting any operating funds from the school budget into that that project. And we're grateful to the Ambrose Parent Association for for that donation. So with that, I do, I do want to provide an update on elementary literacy, even though the summer arrived and we've only been about three weeks away from the actual presentation of the the collaborative report. I wanted to make sure that people understood, knew, and just share with the committee that we have been doing work behind the scenes already on this issue and understand the importance of it and not waiting for. and are not waiting for the school year to start to accomplish and to make sure that we enter the fall at as best position as we can. So, I have been still working with the collaborative, just in consult meetings with them and just discussions around next steps. They've continued to be very helpful for us. They are well-connected within educational circles with consulting and support teams. So, it's been good to speak with them about what's out there for resources as we move forward. We talked, and as you may remember from the report, there were a set of recommendations in that report. Understanding that the report was more involved and encompassing than just the question of literacy, curriculum instruction, I want to just front-load this by saying that is what I'm focused on in this update. I'm not focusing on some of the other items that were related in the report, although it is inclusive of those just in terms of how we think about the process and how we do move forward. So, we will be looking to bring on a literacy consultant to facilitate, help facilitate a district elementary literacy team in kind of thinking this through. And I also want to say that this is, while this is an update, this is also an opportunity for the committee to, I would welcome any feedback that you might have or offline. Once you have a chance to kind of process it, I will be, we will be holding another public meeting on Monday. This will be, some of these will be the topic of the conversation to get some feedback from community members. And I also will be meeting with the parent group or the parents who were actually on the design team on Tuesday for some additional conversation and feedback from them. So, this is a working document. And that's why I have the red draft subject change with stakeholder feedback on every single slide, just to make sure everyone understands that we are still kind of, these are the initial ideas and thoughts, although that also to say that we are really close to ready to be really talking seriously about bringing on or starting to secure a consultant to help with this work. So, the consultant may or may not necessarily be someone who is involved with literacy, where the focus for us is we're much more concerned about finding someone with good facilitation, organizational skills. We certainly want someone who understands curriculum instruction and kind of curriculum design and development. But most importantly, we want to make sure that they are able to really design and develop and have an inclusive and cooperative collaborative process through this. Understanding also that, you know, there can be, could be other consultants that are brought on through the process that may be literacy experts that will be for this group to kind of determine as they go through the work. The consultant really will be focused on facilitating a process, as I said, looking to make sure that it is transparent and that we are also have a structure that's clear for people, that we can articulate that structure and make sure that we're also communicating that structure in the work that's happening. We're looking to, you know, help all of our areas of literacy, certainly inclusive of curriculum instruction and assessment, tiered supports and professional development. Some of those are, I think, have a little bit more of a priority in the initial work. And I'll speak to that in a couple of minutes. And also helping to develop a framework that we can use moving forward, not just really for literacy and the work we have around that, but also just, you know, a program evaluation review process that we can continue to really use and develop through other areas of the work that we do in other content areas and actually all kind of programmatic review because there are certainly plenty of things to review and just making sure that we are using a process that is inclusive and collaborative. We're hoping that the preliminary target for bringing on a consultant would be the week of the 12th. Again, it's preliminary. That would mean that they would have the opportunity to meet with the district administration, school-based administration, and really kind of start to begin the process of understanding exactly, you know, what some of the, you know, the issues are for us, become familiar with our needs, what the conditions are. They obviously will have access to the collaborative literacy review document. And they will be able to have conversations with the collaborative if they need any help in understanding certain elements and aspects of that report. They will be facilitating meetings regularly. And that schedule will need to be kind of determined by the membership once the group is brought together. My initial thinking is that we would really use and leverage the membership of the design team, the educators involved in the design team for this specific work. They're familiar with the issues, they've been involved in the process. They, you know, they have already obviously expressed a commitment to being involved in that through their involvement on the design team. But we would also look to broaden that participation. We would want additional elementary teachers, specialists, general and special education teachers as well to be as part of that so that we've got good broad-based representation. But also, again, it's kind of the same conversation we have with the design team, making sure that we are working with a reasonable number of people so that we can get work done and move forward. We would also want to make sure that there's a very clear communication network. This person, this consultant would be responsible for helping us set that up. They would be responsible for providing written monthly reports or periodic reports and updates to myself, the district administration, the School Committee, and the public would continue to maintain and update our website, our literacy, elementary literacy webpage on our website so that would stay fresh, as well as push out these updates through Parents wear so parents know when there has been, and staff know when there's been an update. And they actually can just draw back to the website to see what those updates are. We would be looking for them to really develop an implementation plan and evaluation framework around this work and kind of mapping out the actual process over the course of at least next year with an understanding that there are certain items that are more pressing and urgent than others. And I am confident that the members that were involved, the educators involved in the design team are certainly aware of what those issues might be. And we can help support that as well from Central Office, understanding, you know, what we think some of the priorities are. And I do think they're relatively clear. And we would also, I had one more thought and I just lost it. So, let me go to this slide. So, again, you know, we want the process to be teacher-based. We want the teacher collaboration. We're looking for their teacher involvement in this and their voice through this work. We want it to be transparent. We want to make sure people understand what we're working on, what we're working on it, progress that gets made. And we really, most importantly, we want this to be centered on student needs. And I think, you know, one of the things that we will do over the next couple of meetings or so, the next couple of months is we do have data in from DIBELS from last year. We have additionally, we will have MCAS data in soon. We'll be doing some analysis of that data ourselves as well in the Central Office and in presenting that, providing that to the literacy team, but also providing that information to the School Committee. Initially, the important, as we go into the fall, it was clear from the assessment, from the study, that there is fairly universal implementation already of UFLY. And it just seems to make sense that we would move forward on ensuring that that is universally implemented, that we really do make understanding what the needs of teachers are around their professional development needs. Some teachers have had, and many teachers have had and have received professional development on UFLY. They may determine that they'd like to have some additional support with that, which we will provide. If there are resource needs out there, we will make sure that we provide those, fill those as well. So, just to begin the year, I think it just seems to make a lot of sense that given the data that we saw from the study and kind of the ubiquitous implementation that's happening now of UFLY, that we just get solid on that for next year. And also understanding that this process with the elementary literacy team should also be evaluating that over the course of next year and making some decisions around kind of longer-term goals and longer-term programmatic implementation. So, we don't want to lock into anything in particular before the teacher team and leadership teams have a chance to really get into this work. Just really super-conscious of the fact that the most important thing for this process is to, and what we heard from the study was that teachers have felt like they've not been listened to, that they have not been part of the process, have not been involved, their voices and expertise has not been heard. That is our number-one goal with this process moving forward is to ensure that that changes, that teachers are intimately involved in this, you know, this work. Beyond just those who will be at the table or on the literacy team, we really need to get some help from the consultant to figure out how to make sure that we're bringing people together with the literacy team, but also going back to our elementary schools and getting feedback and input from the teachers who are not necessarily on the literacy team. So, there are, you know, a few different ways we obviously can do that. There are some structures in place to allow for that, from grade-level meetings to full faculty meetings and staff meetings. But we need to really articulate that communication plan. Next, kind of, and this is not necessarily in order, but also looking for the elementary literacy team to do a gap analysis to consider both immediate and long-term programmatic instructional support needs in all five elements of literacy. There may be some things that we are able to do right off the bat that might make sense and for us to invest in early on, like UFLY, for example. If there are other things that the elementary literacy team land on that believe that we should kind of ramp up for this year, then we would want to know what those are. The gap analysis would be also kind of a longer-term look and at the overall needs of our literacy program. Develop a plan for the expedited review of tiered intervention structure and needs. We, you know, this may be something that just gets pulled out of the elementary literacy team. And I'm, again, just thinking that there's a lot of work here to do. We may have another consultant that may need, that may make sense for them to come and do this. It may be a smaller group, it may be something different. But I'm also trying to, I think, we just need to really also remember that we are, we can't put too much on any one group of people and that there are priorities. And just to really kind of emphasize that there needs to be some fluidity with how this work happens, that there will be, the elementary literacy team may find some emerging needs that comes out of the conversations and the work that they do. We want to make sure that they understand that there's flexibility to be able to find ways to address those needs and that they're not solely kind of responsible for that. And that'll come through, obviously, from the work with the consultant. And then, you know, I think on the front end, just in kind of using UFLY as an example, you know, what are the short-term professional development needs that we can address immediately? And then, kind of longer-term professional development planning, this group would be having those conversations and mapping out some of those ideas and plans. And then, I also think it's going to be important for us to really, to, as, looking at our literacy specialists, those professionals that were involved in the assessment as well, who expressed that they did not feel that they had the professional development that they needed to do their job, which obviously is concerning. We really want to kind of drill down on what that means for them and make sure that we're providing, you know, what it is that they need and kind of ramp that up relatively quickly because obviously, you know, all of our general ed teachers teach literacy, but our literacy specialists teach literacy and work with literacy all day long. So, it's really important for us to make sure that we put them in the best place possible for helping students. So, I understand that this is kind of Superintendent remarks, but if I was, I'd be happy to take any kind of clarifying questions. If there are lengthier questions, that I would appreciate those kind of offline. Or feedback can also come to me through email. Again, you know, we're having some stakeholder sessions next week and we'll continue to push this out and get feedback. But we will be looking to move forward with the consultant component of it relatively, relatively soon.
Mr. Nixon.
I beat Dr. Matthews, he got my hand up first. So, just a couple, I'm going to keep this short. I have a quick question and then just a couple of observations and comments. Dr. Hackett, to one of your slides, feel free to share it again if you like. You talked about a potential expedited review for an element of this that may actually be pulled out of the team process. I wondered if, could you talk a little bit more about that? If not the team, who would be evaluating that? Does it sort of, is it hard for you to answer right now? Does that depend on what the recommendation is? What additional clarity or understanding might you give us and members of the public around that particular element in your slide?
So, good question. You know, I really want to provide that, well, first of all, the urgency that we all have, we'd all have for any topic that we're talking about around student achievement and learning is around our most vulnerable students, right? The students who are, who we are always worried about, we provide supports for, and, you know, that those students who may need some additional support outside of the general education classroom. So, I, that is a, I think, should be prioritized as part of the work. My point around that being pulled out is that if the elementary literacy team can't get to that or they may not even necessarily be all the right people to be involved in that conversation or involved in that work, then there's got to be some flexibility in this process to allow some of those kinds of side paths to happen with other groups of people. So, really emphasizing the fact that, you know, there are going to be times, there may be times in this work where the consultant in the team decides that they really need to have someone come in as a literacy expert and talk about one element of literacy or talk about a program or they just need to have that flexibility to make those determinations with leadership support, obviously. But, you know, I just don't want people to feel overwhelmed with this as well.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you for the clarification.
Sure.
So, then my, I have a comment and then a question to you. But I really appreciate, you said this more than once. You talked about how important it is for the teacher feedback, how a lot of this is going to be teacher-focused. I think that's terribly important. I think it's terribly appropriate. One of the things that we've certainly heard through this process is how some teachers have kind of indicated they felt they haven't been heard. So, there's perception and then there's reality. But often, perception is reality. So, you know, the fact that teacher, although I'm going to say collectively we, mostly means administration, given our sort of interactions with teachers as a School Committee is more sort of limited. Although we may be hearing teachers, if the perception is we're not, that's what I'm really focused on and concerned about. So, in this process, just an open-ended question I would ask you, and as well this goes to Dr. Ellenima and Ms. Kirby, is what can we do to sort of reassure teachers they will be heard? And specifically, how can we, as the School Committee, help in that regard? Now, we can't all be there as a part of this process, so that's not what I'm suggesting. I don't know, is there sort of a, is there a recording mechanism? Is there, you know, is there a scribe of these meetings? And it's sort of, teachers understand that their comments are going to be, you know, coming back to the School Committee so we can see it? I'm not suggesting that's the way it should work. But what I am sort of registering is my concern when teachers express that they feel they aren't being heard, that's a real concern of mine. Even if we, again, collectively we feel like we've been listening, what I care most about is the perception that we haven't because that is like the reality. So, how can we, as a School Committee, help in that regard? And I don't expect you to have an answer right now, but for my part as a School Committee member, I'm interested in knowing what you and what Jen and what Lori sort of think about that because anything that either I can do or any individual School Committee member can do or we can collectively do as a body to help ensure that teachers are being heard and believe that they're being heard, I think is really essential for this process to be successful.
And we share your concern. And so, there's, and you said it well, I don't know if it was the last meeting, Mr. Nixon, but, you know, maybe it was two meetings ago. That might have been the last meeting. Yeah, it was the last meeting. That, you know, there are two issues here. They are definitely, they're related, but they're two issues. That, you know, there, there are two issues here. They are definitely, they're related and, but there are two issues here. There's the issue of culture that, that came out through the, through the assessment, through the study. The issue of culture was fairly pointed towards central office. And so we have that issue. There's not anybody in central office, from Ms. Kirby to Dr. Ellen Emma to myself, who want teachers feeling that way. Candidly, you know, we've been having some really honest reflective conversations among the three of us. And I know I have also been, as the, as Ms. Kirby and Dr. Ellen Emma have also been doing some, some soul searching and deep reflection independently. I mean, that is an issue that, you know, cannot continue. And we recognize fully the need to, to, to deal with that. But that's complicated, right? Because culture is not, it's, it's a, it's a, you know, it's a sum of the whole, of the parts, and everyone at some levels responsible for culture. And I think since coming here three years ago and, you know, this district and this, the school community has been fairly divided. And there's been a lot of tension around literacy specifically. So, you know, whether that combined with coming out of the pandemic and the issues that were, that the district faces, all of the districts did in the state, just around how people were feeling, what they were experiencing, what they were going through. I do remember my first year here when we were really, there were months where we weren't sure if we were going to be able to open school because we didn't have enough people, because we were doing 10-day quarantines. That first year was survival. And I think it was survival, not just for the district, it was survival for our families, it was survival for our teachers. People were scared to come back, if you remember. We were, you know, we, we were requiring vaccinations that put tension on people. There was, there were just so many things that were on the hierarchy, on Maslow's hierarchy, that were right down to survival that helped to create a climate that was challenging, very challenging. And I think-
I would only interject that we were all getting hate mail for every decision we made on all of those points, because there was no decision we made that made everybody happy, but please continue.
No, I was on the receiving end of those. So I think if you remember. So, you know, there's all that, right? And, and I, you know, but there's also, we somehow got to this place where teachers don't feel respected, they don't feel listened to, they don't feel like they've been involved. I, and I think, I think there's some other reasons for that. I mean, I, you know, I know where I came from in Braintree in March of 2020, when we shut down and I looked up and, you know, it was my assistant superintendent, the business manager, and I started bringing my dog to the office because I just, just have another body. There was nobody around. And, and then districts and, and central office leaderships teams went in to try to figure out how to, how to deal with the remote hybrid learning, you know, scenario for that following year. And I think that, you know, like I said, I know what happened for us. We, you had to consolidate the decision-making around a few people because you just, we just were trying to get things done and trying to make things safe. Trying to build out, you know, two entirely separate educational systems that we had never done before. Some systems were still not quite where they need to be with technology. None of us were where we needed to be in terms of just, you know, equipment distribution, but even here, I know that just getting a wireless network up and running and all those things that factored into trying to bring kids back to school. And I think that, you know, and I, I'll just speak for myself, you know, I, I know since being here also, that we've kind of stayed in that mode, in my opinion. I mean, I, I think that it's, it's not been for a lot of reasons and a lot of good reasons, because we also have a lot of, of good leadership through our coordinators, through our, through our directors. So but we've not really done, we've, we've, I think we've been slow to come out of that and have larger conversations and and really focused on involving teachers who, in the first year or two, candidly, they, they didn't, people were so busy with their own families, worried about their own health and conditions and that it was hard to actually get people, if you remember, we couldn't even get people to open school up for, for the first year. So so I think those things have changed and, you know, and I do think, not to carry this on too long, I'm sorry, I've been doing a lot of reflecting and I don't want to do it in a public meeting, but I will just share with you because I just got my evaluation tonight, today. Doing a lot of reflecting on what leadership is now and how, how can leaders be effective in what I feel is a very different time for public education, for public government, certainly for public schools. And I feel it, you actually, as a committee, earlier last year, kind of started to have some conversation around this, around, you know, just the idea that, you know, we have a, there is a different parent generation coming through, there's different expectations, we see it nationally, we, we feel it here. And I feel as though I need to make shifts in my own leadership and rethink how we do business. And you know, so that has to factor into, and certainly receiving the feedback through the study was, I mean, it was extremely difficult for us. You know, we're, I mean, I'm, I'm almost 30 years in. I know Ms. Kirby and Dr. Ellen Emma have similar tenures in public education. We gave our lives to do this and you know, the thought of being, you know, the superintendent of an organization where people don't feel like they're trusted is just, is painful, candidly. So but we also see that as a challenge and, and we recognize that feedback and we take it seriously and, and we know it's going to, but it's going to take time, right? I mean, trust is consistency over time. So we need to think about our own leadership actions. We need to think about our own interpersonal interactions with our faculty. I need to think about being, you know, my own visibility within the schools and really trying to build those relationships. But we also have this literacy challenge that we cannot wait for the culture to be okay before we do that work. And you know, culture is also built through the work. So, you know, it's one thing to walk through a hallway and wave at people, but to be in a place where we're sitting down with teachers and, and doing the work and they're participating and involved in it, that is what matters. That's what hopefully builds trust or takes away trust, but that's, that's the goal and that's the point. And so understanding where we are right now, that's why we are bringing in a consultant to do this work. I, I think similar to the collaborative who was an outside organization, who it was clear people trusted and shared what they were feeling with openly and candidly. And we also now need to recognize that that some semblance of that model needs to continue. I mean, now there's work to do, right? We're not, you know, we're, we've got the information, a lot of information. I think there's still more that's needed in terms of thinking about our programs and specifically our instructional strategies and have, and approaches, but we just need an outside consultant to do that work. So we're separating ourselves out from that to a large extent. We're looking for the consultant to really kind of take the lead on the development of the process, on facilitating the process, on developing the communications, on being available for that group to speak with, to create, you know, an atmosphere and a, and a climate in that group's work that people can feel, that they can say what they want to say, that they can be honest about it, that, you know, that it's a safe place for them to be. So that's a long answer, but I, I, I think it's an important answer. I think, you know, I feel like it's worth my time and I appreciate the question a lot because you know, we're, we're trying to figure this out too. And we recognize that we, there are just changes that we really need to make. And so there, there's that.
So that was a long answer, but everything you said was, was great. And I think well said, and I'm, I'm appreciative for all of it. I hope, I hope those still with us, you know, watching today or listening carefully to what you said. I appreciate it. Look forward to the next steps on this. Thank you. Thank you, Frank.
Dr. Matthews.
So just to follow up, Frank, on what you said, you know, to what extent do you think, I, I have a bunch of questions that aren't related, but I also had a thought while you were talking, which is, to what extent do you think the challenges that we're facing actually, you know, sort of predated your, because you, you talked a lot about your own experience coming into the district and the particular sort of dimensions of, of that time, right? The COVID period. But, you know, to what extent do you think, you know, some of the challenges that we're facing predate that? And how does that complicate things?
Not sure I entirely understand your question.
I, I guess, I mean, because you talked a lot about the particular changes that we've seen during COVID. And I think one of the things I was struck by, you know, in terms of reading the report, is that some of the structural stuff that, that existed in the district, I'm thinking, you know, sort of specifically about the special education program, this sort of unique framework that we have around how to identify kids who might have greater learning needs. I mean, some of that feels like it actually predates your tenure in the district, predates the challenges with COVID and, and also for the sake of our district and moving forward complicates the path. And I just was wondering if you could give voice to that for a second and sort of how you're, you're looking at that, if that, if that makes better sense now.
Let me, let me answer what I thought I heard you say. And what I think I can answer, I, it's, I obviously can't comment on, I don't know anything that was pre-me, right? And I can't imagine a time where it was pre-me. But I can't answer that. I know of my own experience. I don't necessarily know that the process specifically around special education identification is fundamentally different here than it has been in other places that I've been. I, I certainly know that what is different is, I think, the expectations of, of, of the system and are, and I think there, I think we've struggled, my time, my observation, and I think that Dr. Ellen Emma and Ms. Kirby would agree. You know, I think we have struggled to, to get our feet back under us since the pandemic around special education and structures and clear protocols. And and I feel like there's been significant improvement with that. And, you know, we, I, I, we're all excited about having a brand new special education director who's only brand new to us and has vast experience in special education elsewhere and broad experience in special education elsewhere, joining us and has joined us. And, you know, I also want to make sure that she had, and I could continue to say to her, you don't have to fix anything for a little bit. Just go in, understand, learn, have those conversations and build those relationships, build the trust. So you know, I will say, we're understaffed. So, you know, and when we talk about the budget to you, when we talk about the budget publicly, when we talk about the budget to town's finance committee, to the select board, to town meeting, nobody wants to talk about additional administration. Nobody wants to talk about central office leadership, certainly. But what I've seen since I've been here, and, and, you know, there are fact, there are reasons for it, but you know, we don't have a technology director. We have Mr. Marin, who's also operations and he's also finance. Dr. Ellen Emma also involved technology in the instructional side, was pretty much the technology director when I got here, you know, and there are other areas where, you know, when I look at these are the internal conversations to share out loud here. When I, in conversations with, with Ms. Kirby and Dr. Ellen Emma, just around the amount of responsibilities that all of us take on because we don't really have anywhere else for them to go and they need to be done. Things get missed. Attention is, can't be, we can't spend a hundred percent of attention on everything all the time. And I think, you know, I'll speak for myself, I know that I would do, there were, there would be some things that I would do differently if I could offload some of my responsibilities elsewhere, but there really isn't any place to, to do that. And on top of the fact that we are, we are in some challenging times and, and, you know, in speaking to some of my colleagues, you know, this, what we're experiencing, I think, is unique to us. I, I do. I think, you know, the climate, the culture that we are experiencing here right now, particularly around literacy specifically, but also just in general, is, is, there are unique elements of that. And I think part, one of the unique elements of that is the volume of how people are feeling. The number, the percentage of people who are feeling this, like they're not, they can't trust, like they can't speak their mind, like they feel like they're not respected, not involved. That is, is concerning anyway, but that is especially concerning. And to Mr. Nixon's point, you know, whether, you know, perception is reality and as leaders, it doesn't matter what the causes are for us. And we've had this discussion too, like, it just doesn't matter. We, it's, it's, it could, you know, we have a problem as leaders that we need to address. And we need to figure out strategies to do that. It really doesn't matter as much how we got here at this point. So, but I, I want to have discussions with you soon, I think, about, you know, while, you know, we certainly need more literacy support, but some of the issues we have are symptomatic of not having enough support in other areas. And, you know, I know people aren't going to want to hear that, but I, I, you know, I think that on a, you know, just, I, I just think we need to have, we need to talk about it. And, you know, what we talk about here is that we don't want to whine, we don't want to complain, we, we, you know, we're, we, we understand the jobs we're in, but I've, I, I think we also need to make sure that we advocate for, not us, but for the district so that we can have the staffing for our kids and our faculty that, that, that I think they deserve and frankly, that we need.
So, so on that point, I actually, one of the things I've done since we met last is to go through and look at, I remember the collaborative actually flagged a number of comparator districts that, that Desi uses to compare us against. And one of the things I've done is gone and looked just at publicly available information about some of those comparison districts and, and their central office staff. Obviously, that doesn't even speak to that sort of intermediary level of staff that exists between central office and, and the teachers who are actually doing the work, right? So all of the literacy specialists and, you know, special education support folks and who are sort of in the middle that don't get committed to public webpages and, and org charts. But, you know, one of the things that's really struck me, which I, I kind of knew already, is that there's a real gap between what we have and what other districts have in terms of, you know, support across multiple areas. And so I, I really appreciate you bringing that up. I guess all of this kind of dovetails with the other big question that I had, which was in terms of the consultant. You know, do you sort of envision the consultant? Because I, I've been thinking a lot about the sort of buckets that the collaborative put, the concerns that they, they raise, the concerns that came out of the research with our research participants, both teachers as, as well as families. You know, we, we sort of, you talked a lot about the sort of curriculum piece. And I think there's one last question I'd like to ask around that, that I'll park for a second. But in terms of the sort of culture and communication pieces, do you envision the consultant taking those things on as well initially? Or do you think that's a different process? Or does that sort of fall under the bucket of, you know, what you said in your PowerPoint slides around, you know, this may end up kind of being teased out as a, a separate work stream? I guess that was, because I, you know, I was thinking about sort of curriculum, culture, communications as sort of being the, the biggest three things. And the presentation focuses largely on, on the curriculum side. I just wanted to sort of hear what your thoughts are on involving a consultant or sort of where those other work streams happen, or whether it's sort of part and parcel of the whole thing.
I, I think it's all what you said. Not to dodge this question, I, you know, I think that I know, sitting here right now, what I can do to help this issue. Like I, as a superintendent in this position, I know the things that I can do going into next year to help rebuild, to help build trust with our staff. I also know we're going into contract negotiations with five bargaining units. So, you know, we have that kind of, you know, there's always tension there anyway, understandably. And but there are definitely things that, you know, as we look and evaluate our responsibilities within the central office and, you know, where are we spending our time? And, you know, how should we be spending our time that, that I think that we can address? We recognize that, you know, with literacy specifically is we, you know, we, we need to get that work going and we can't be as involved as we would normally would be because people feel that right now and we don't have time to repair that. So I, it could be the case that it emerges that we really have some things that we need to bring someone in to provide us some help with around culture and, and obviously clearly open to that and would wa, and would welcome that. You know, and even if it's even internally, us being able to talk to someone about ideas or our own professional development around this topic, but so much of it, in my opinion, is really built on just our ability to build the relationships and and also find ways to provide avenues to hear people more. I think really I think really redefining our relationship or really work, I'll say it that way. Working, I think we have a good working relationship with our union, but I, I think that that is going to be key in terms of all of us sharing in the responsibility of rebuilding the culture. Because, you know, perception becomes reality, well, there's also this self fulfilling prophecy around this stuff too, right? I mean, if, if, if the, you know, if the narrative is that, you know, we're not doing a good job and I want to know what specifically, we want to know specifically, what is it that we can do? And how can you help us do that? Because we are, we are in this together, it doesn't benefit anybody for this not to, to turn around. And, you know, we're committed to that. But, you know, I think that could emerge, we may really go through this. And again, today, I want to front load it by saying, our focus right now in the three weeks that we've had, I made the mistake of taking three days off last week and I've been punished ever since. And I went camping, which I hated. But I, you know, we haven't had a lot of time and people are not here. So, but, so we really needed to focus on, I think, the literacy piece of it and really making sure that we're moving forward thoughtfully on that. But, you know, as we continue, I think you'll hear more from us around some of the topic of just culture.
So I guess the last thing, and then I'll, I know there are two other. Yeah, I know, I, so curriculum itself, obviously, you've talked about the human resource aspect of things and the financial implications of that. But I think the other question I have is sort of, you talk about, you know, further rollout of UFLY. I mean, my understanding is that doesn't have a financial implication for us at this point. We have those resources. I know, obviously, there's other curricular resources we might want to bring in or other things we might want to develop in order to have a Winchester curriculum, so to speak, moving forward. You know, is that something that you're hoping that the consultant is going to help with? Is that something that you've already been thinking about? And sort of thinking, considering the timing of that request and how we might be able to put that in? Because obviously, I, you know, I think we all know that curricular resources can be expensive. And it's, you know, as far as the current budget goes, it's not beyond, you know, sort of the year to year funds for that. It's not a sort of a large investment, it's not necessarily budgeted for at this point. Could you talk a little bit about, sort of, are you thinking that the consultant will help that process as well in terms of sort of vetting and thinking about what our next steps are in terms of curriculum? Or is that something that happens internally? And, you know, what's sort of the timing around that in terms of, you know, our ability to ask for those funds? Do you see it as maybe an out of cycle request or something that's going to come up with, you know, the next budget funding timeline?
Well, I mean, I think the consultant is key to bringing our teacher leaders and our leadership together to have those discussions. And the mistake that I don't want to make is to not give them that responsibility and of power, authority to be able to do that. I think we have great literacy people in our district. I think there's a lot of knowledge that can be brought to the table. I think we have a lot of expertise. I know also that I think we're bringing the right people to the table who can also say, you know what, we really need, we don't really know about this and we really need someone to talk to us about this or we need that. If this team starts to identify resources that they believe are needed immediately, then that's their job. I mean, that should be what they do. And then, you know, we have to figure that funding out and whatever is reasonable, whether that, depending on what it is, if it's kind of the one time purchase stuff, you know, there are some mechanisms for that. Clearly, it's, you know, we're not going to come up with $3 million for anything right, right now. But we don't want, I don't want them going into this thinking about money and what we don't have for money. I want them to go into this thinking about what do we need to do, what's best for kids? And, you know, what's most important? And if that starts to point to some resources that, that they need right now, if it starts to point some resources in, maybe we can phase in over the course of this year. We need to know that and they'll let us know that. You know, I've had many, many emails, many people who said, you know, we're here to support. You know, if you need the money, we're here to support. So I think, you know, I think, I think we will find the resources to do the right thing. And I think we will, I think we will take our time to make sure that we're choosing thoughtfully. And we also already have things that are being used in the district that we may continue to expand out and pilot. You know, I know Fish Tank showed up, for example, on, is being used at VO. I mean, that might be something this team has a conversation about and, you know, and two other places want to try it this year and we, you know, we do that. So, I, I just, if we do anything, I want to make sure that we put this in the hands of our teachers through this team with a consultant that is working with us to make those decisions. And with that, I made him disappear.
Thank you. He disappeared. Ms. Bergstrom, you had your hand raised.
Sorry.
I promise that.
All I'm saying is my connection got unstable, so I had to shut off my video because I suddenly, in the middle of your answer, you started glitching, so.
It's been happening to all of us, Tim, don't worry about it.
I don't think it do, I think I'm glitching right now anyway, so.
I promise I'll be super quick, Ms. Bolanese. So I just wanted to really quickly echo what Mr. Nixon and Dr. Hackett were saying about perception and reality. And I do believe that in the past, since Mr. Nixon and I, at least historically, have been on this committee, we have had a climate of trust and collaboration in this district. So I do believe that it is a rebuilding, not a creating from scratch. And I do think that we can get back there. And I think it is the most important thing before we do move forward with any curriculum and assessment work, is to work on that rebuilding of trust with our teachers and the community because nothing we put forward would be accepted without creating that community first. So I, I think that, I appreciate, Dr. Hackett, your focus on that and looking for a consultant whose focus is that first. Because I think we need to get back to a place where we know primarily that, first of all, we're all in this for the kids, that our first priority is our students, our student learning, our student achievement, our students who are struggling, as well as our students who need enrichment, and all along the spectrum of learners that we have in this district. So I really appreciate that coming out of this, this study that we've done, knowing that we don't have that because it helps explain a lot about where we are. And I think that the very first step in this is with the staff and the community is believing that we all want to get there. So I, I just want to echo what Mr. Nixon said. This is something that is important to me as a school committee member. I know that it's important to this administration. And I just want to reassure any staff or community members out there that we do believe that having a climate of trust and collaboration and that we do believe in our staff as educators and professionals is someplace that we want to get back to. So I, that's, that was my short form. And then just to follow up on Mr. Matthews, again, we've, we've struggled with income for years now to explain to them that administration, we are not administration heavy in comparison to our local districts. It is the first question we are asked every budget cycle is why we are so administration heavy. And I'm just going to use the opportunity to pitch again, that administration saves us money. And obviously now, culture and time in the long run. So I, I don't believe that when we come to income, when we come to town meeting, asking for more administration, it's to make this district top heavy, but to create us more touch points within the district and the community with our families, our students and our teachers. So that, those are the two comments that I just wanted to make sure that we had out there.
And Mr. Hopcroft?
I would, you know, echo Ms. Bergstrom's comments about the narratives around finance, for sure. But, but anyhow, a few points, you know, I know each of us, we talk with you, Dr. Hackett, a lot. You know, I know you spend a lot of time, you know, along with me and I believe many of the other members. And I think it's worth acknowledging your leadership in, and the vulnerability really of the district in engaging in the six month trusted inclusive process where people can really be heard. And, you know, the findings, they were hard, absolutely. But they're, in my view, they're really now actionable in a way that they weren't before. And so I think it was really important to go through that and for people to appreciate that first step. You know, I, you know, as Ms. Bergstrom said, you know, this is very important to all of us. We all feel the urgency, we feel the urgency in the community, we feel the urgency as parents and as committee members. But at the same time, you know, I, you know, I appreciate, you know, your approach, you know, to, to, as we continue to move forward, as we did in the last phase, to really be thoughtful and transparent in creating another process that is going to be trusted and not to rush too quickly, bearing in mind that urgency that, you know, that we all feel. Yeah, I heard you saying, I think it's absolutely right, put the educators at the center of this. We heard loud and clear that they are the most trusted experts. They're the ones that the parents and administration and everyone believes should be guiding this. And so having them in the center, but with the students in their focus, you know, I think is the right thing to do. And the frequent updates, having a cadence of, you know, monthly progress reports, communications to, you know, continue to build trust, but also an opportunity for people to provide constructive input, you know, along the way. So I think, you know, this approach is really, you know, really important. And, and, you know, this is an issue that, you know, as we've seen from findings, it goes well beyond literacy. So, you know, again, your leadership and, you know, leading us through this sort of a process, just, you know, I know it's frustrating, but just taking a beat to say, let's just be thoughtful here. Let's make sure that we're doing this the right way, that it's inclusive, that it's trustworthy, that the teachers are leading it, because, you know, we, we need to get it right. And if we get it right, it's the right thing for our kids, but it'll also be the right thing for the community to get behind and for the resources to support the work that needs to be done ahead. So, so I think, yeah, I appreciate where we're going and, and, you know, look forward to, to the next update.
Thank you. Thank you for all the, all of your thoughtful comments from each of you. And I guess I would just add or probably repeat what many of you have said. For me, I just, I really respect this process that you, Dr. Hackett, have been leading over these last six months. And I do think as we move forward, it is important to continue to respect this process. And as you've described, placing the teachers at the center of this, of leading us forward and moving forward as a district and working with the consultant on these many different aspects of what we need to do and what's best for our students, for what's best for our students. And then figure out the resources for this. And I also just think we had, you had said, you had expressed that it's important to have that safe space to, for people to be able to express what they're thinking, for all of us to be able to express, to reflect and express our opinions. So I'm just looking forward to being able to participate in this process and see what comes out of the work that teachers and all of us are working, are doing. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And I appreciate the conversation and the feedback. And that concludes my, my brief remarks.
So Frank, I just wanted to ask, is there a possibility that we might, I don't know how you feel about this and I don't want to put you on the spot, but is there a possibility that you might be able to put your deck on the literacy study webpage? I mean, is that something you'd be willing to do?
Yeah, I think what I would like to do is have the public session next Monday and then the session with the parents on Tuesday and, you know, see whether they're, I wouldn't make, you know, substantial or changes to it, but there might be some things that might kind of flush it out some more. I mean, I can do either, you know, just, just to be clear that these are, these documents are draft, they're, and they're evolving. So, you know, it is when you put something up and then, you know, there's not the benefit of hearing the narrative around it. And I'm very sensitive to communication right now. So I just want to make sure that, you know, it doesn't get lost that way, but I'm happy to do whatever.
And I just think it's a great outline of what the plan is. And I think, you know, for those who, I don't know if everybody has the distinct pleasure of doing WinCam on demand after the fact, but it's, I think it's a succinct statement on sort of what the, the next steps are, which is helpful. But to refer to you on that, I just wanted to make the suggestion.
I'm happy to do it. Maybe we can get the clip of this particular part of the meeting and include it with the, with the slide deck. Thank you.
I just note that's 12.5, Madam Chair. It's a time check.
I was just looking at that as well and looking at where we are in the agenda. So with that, then I will move us on to the consent agenda, of which we have the three items around the Murphy Foundation Grant consolidation, which basically is taking several grants that we had received over the years and taking the balance of those and consolidating them into a sum of money that will also go towards teaching and learning. And then we also have consideration of the acceptance of the donation of the Ambrose Elementary School sign. And then also dispersal of activity account funds to the class of 2019.
So Madam Chair, I just have a request to pull item C off the consent agendas because I do have a question and a comment about that, but the A and B I'm okay with.
Okay.
So I'm happy to make a motion to accept the consent agenda, item A and B as presented.
Second.
We will need to do a roll call vote as we are on a remote meeting. So, Mr. Hopcroft?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews? Dr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so that vote is unanimous. And Mr. Nixon, I'll just look for your question.
Yeah, my, my question, and we pivoted to this, you know, I think it was right before COVID. We got some input from legal counsel about how to handle these student activity account funds that had been building up over time. So now we're talking about the class of 2019. These are folks who, many of them had perhaps just graduated from college last year. They may actually just this coming tax season be considered no longer a dependent of family and they're filing on their own, et cetera. This is not an insignificant amount of money. So I just had a question, perhaps it's from Mr. Marin. What does it mean when we say we're going to distribute it to officers, plural? So the IRS is going to look at this a certain way. Do we send a check with like a 1099K form or a 1099MISC form? And because it's not going to a person singular, but people plural, what does that mean? Are we, are we really clear about to whom we're giving this money? And when it goes, are we providing them? And this, when we first pivoted to this practice, there was some extended school committee conversation about what guidance are we giving these young adults if we're going to just give them a check for a significant amount of money? So those are my questions. And I don't know if there's urgency in us voting this actually today, but I just want to be sure that if we, if we say yes to this, we understand what we're doing and we're not sort of unintentionally then like presenting sort of a financial problem to some young adults who don't quite know how to solve it.
Can I ask you?
As to follow up, that, as you answer that, can you just remind us, is this money being given to these officers just for them to just drop into their personal accounts? Is this money for them or is it money that's entrusted to them in some way for some purpose related to their class? I just don't remember.
Yep. Yes, part of the process is we work with the officers to have them, they confirm that they set up a bank account, kind of, it goes through that process and we verify that. And then we're actually cutting the check for them to establish that fund for them to use, you know, as their class reunions and whatever it may be. In terms of tax forms, Mr. Nixon, I have to see if anything gets kicked out from our unit system. I'm not sure we're doing anything in terms of that, it's going to be a check towards them or it's their funds.
I just, I think that's an important question because if, if we're kicking this out with the understanding that like if class officers have the obligation to set up a bank account in the name of Winchester High School class of 2019 and they have control over the money, that's one thing. But if we're literally. But if we're literally cutting a check to a young adult in the amount of six, seven, and in some cases it could be five figures, that can actually have significant tax implications to them. And of course, it's not really quote their money, right? We're just saying, we wish you to be the custodian of these funds. So before we took action on this, I just wanted to be sure we understood as a committee what we were doing and frankly, how, what, what direction and guidance we're giving them? How are we supporting these folks before we do it?
Yep. And I'll add too, part of this, we kind of treat this, we've been treating this as a one-off process coming before you for these votes. We've kind of been parallel, we've been working on updating our student activities policy, the procedures manual that goes with that. So that's something that we were working on. And we hope to have in front of you soon for review and kind of for voting. And that's sort of, uh, that clarifies that process and really sets it in stone for us going forward. But, uh, yeah, that check is being made out to that bank account that they set up on behalf of the class. So we're not cutting a check to someone's personal account.
Okay. So if that's the case, I'm okay, I'm okay approving this. I think it would be helpful to, to get that policy discussion on the table pretty quickly. Cause this is a real, as you said, it's a rare kind of one-off thing. We don't talk about it every month. It'd be good to kind of formalize this somehow.
And I'll remind you, Mr. Nixon, we did talk about this as part of policy last year. There was a policy Mr. Mayor brought forward.
Well, right. But when I'm raising the question, because in the materials we have for today, I think that the language says the check is going to be cut to the officers and that just made me uncomfortable. So it's not, we're not really giving the money to the individuals. Right? The intention is it's going to a bank account that these officers are setting up. The money is still going to be the class of 2019. And that's just what I wanted to clarify today. So I'm okay, I'm, I'll make a motion to approve item C as it was presented in the consent agenda. Just with the understanding how the funds are going to be distributed, as Mr. Marin just indicated.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Mr. Nixon, I believe I saw an aye and Dr. Matthews, Mr. Hopcroft?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the vote is unanimous on, um, item C. So with that, we will move along to report update and action items. The first of which is the approval of, consideration of approval of the curb cut at 11 and 13 Irving Street. I see that we also have John Serbiere. And I thought we had one more person here.
Ms. Bolines, yep. We have, uh, Mr. Dan Vitrono that I'll promote here. They'll have a quick presentation.
Great.
And Madam Chair, I think the person you may have been referring to is the, the town planner. Is that the, and, and I don't know.
Yes. And then.
I don't know that, that.
And maybe about a, maybe about 45 minutes ago, the name dropped off.
How you doing everyone? This is Dan Vitrono. I just, um, I want to apologize in advance. My, I'm having some last minute camera issues, so I just filled it in with a picture. So hopefully you can put a face to a name. My brother Nick and my father Gene, who was also photographed in that picture, they're attendees as well. So I don't want to waste too much of your guys' time. I know you guys are, um, you know, there's, um, you guys have a lot to cover today. So I don't want to, you know, take up too much of your time. So we'll just get right into it.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so, um, like I just said, um, the Vitrono Development Team is mixed up, is made up of myself, Dan Vitrono, uh, my brother Nick, Nick Vitrono and Jean Vitrono, our dad. And, uh, I just want to talk briefly about the 1113 Irving Street Development Project. So a little bit about ourselves. So we're a family of small-time real estate investment, uh, individuals. We specialize in multi-unit residential investment properties, kind of focused in the greater Boston area. A lot of Belmont, Watertown, Arlington, now recently into Winchester. And we primarily target long-term value-add multifamily properties and kind of shorter-term redevelopment opportunities. And that brings us to our most recent acquisition, which was 1113 Irving Street. And as you can see, um, through some of these images here, it's in very close proximity to the Morocco School, less than 750 feet away. The four-unit property consisted of two, three bedroom, three, uh, two bath units and then two, you know, one bedroom, one bath units. And like I said, in a butt's Bates Road here, which runs right up along to the Morocco. Um, and what we did was we thought, you know, because of the close proximity of this property to the schools, we thought they'd be perfect for families. So we went right in there, de-letted the top two upper units, repainted, refurbished them and are now renting to, you know, families with young individuals, which, you know, we're happy about. And so basically our vision for the property is look, we have this back portion of the lot here that we're kind of looking to optimize. It's just kind of a green space here. It's an oversized lot, given the structure that's there currently. So we're thinking, hey, could we subdivide this back lot? Build a new structure on that new parcel there and, you know, increase the amount of units available in the Winchester market. So could we build a four-unit multifamily property designated parking for each unit? Brand-new landscape and really the full works. Um, and you can kind of see in this image here, this is kind of, you know, roughly where the subdivision would take place. The driveway is kind of here in this reddish area and then dark red would be, you know, ballpark area where the structure would fall. And these are all, these designs are kind of all up in the air. We're very much in phase one of this. This development project, just kind of as a fact finding, we're kind of doing fact finding as we speak. And really, I just wanted to touch, you know, briefly, briefly on the community impact. So we'd be adding three market value, you know, affordable or three market value, uh, units within close proximity to Morocco, the high school, the, you know, town center. An affordable housing unit, which I know the town would be very interested in, given the somewhat moderate inventory that the town has currently. From 2020 numbers, I think it said about, you know, 296 units that they'd consider subsidized housing units, which is about 3% of the total inventory that the town has. So our goal here is higher density, which means affordability and then low impact to the school district, which we think equals positive community impact. So basically our asks are kind of twofold. A, we'd like to have permission to do a property line survey for the, for the Morocco School District. Because if you see here, you kind of have a, it's, it's not 100% certain where the Bates Road line ends. Does it end right at our property line here or does it run property further up Bates Road? We'd like to do a survey to kind of have a definitive answer on how far Bates Road goes up. And then also if Bates Road goes further up towards the Morocco, we'd like to request an easement over Bates Road that allows us to do a curb cut of, you know, 15, 20 feet, whatever's needed for the property. And that's really all we'd need from you guys is a favorable vote on that. And we think that this could kind of be a step one for what we think is a, is a win-win project for Winchester. You know, us being real estate investors, we want to maximize and get the highest and best use for our property. And then also the town Winchester, you know, we think they definitely benefit from added, you know, affordable units and then also market value, you know, quality, uh, units. And then, um, you know, just a rough breakdown here, we'd want to, you know, site survey, grand easement, development, our, develop architectural plans, acquire permits and then potentially break ground. And with that, I know, sorry, that was really quick. I just wanted to not take up too much of you guys' time. And with that, I'll just, I'll leave it there. And if you guys have any questions from us or, um, yeah, that's all I have.
All right. Questions from the committee, Mr. Hopcroft?
Yeah, I just had a quick question for you, Dan. Is, is there any way for that, uh, for a driveway to be put around the existing house over to Irving Street?
No, we, at this point, we're keeping all of our options open. That's something that we are considering. We've considered keeping it as one lot and putting two structures on there. We're, we're working out those details. There isn't a ton of room. I, I guess we could consider it and then just have an easement over our property line to Irving Street. But, um, again, these are just things that we're keeping in our back pocket as all potential options. So.
Yeah, yeah, the, the concern in my mind is, um, you know, there's a, it looks like about a dozen lots there that are all these like double-length lots that, that this may create a slippery slope of, you know, a dozen new units, which, which would be great for the added housing density and, and low-income, um, housing in proximity to the school. But it's a lot of cars driving across the sidewalk that is due to enter the school. And just as we're about to embark on, on, you know, what the plans will be for a future Morocco. You know, it just raises some, some flags in my mind. So that's, that's why it's helpful to know that there, there may be other options, uh, on that one. Thank you.
Yeah, definitely understandable. Definitely understandable. For what it's worth, if you look in the GIS map, there's only the lot to the left of us. If you're looking at an aerial view, seems to have the frontage that we would have. So, and the further you go down, those lots get a little bit skinnier, which in theory could be kind of an easy out from the town's perspective to say, hey, look, you don't have the frontage here even for a development like that. Again, you know, still a lot to be determined there, but it is an understandable concern, given the future development plans of the Morocco that I've heard you guys are considering. So again, we're kind of just taking it in stride and seeing what kind of information we can come up with.
Yeah, and if I can ask another question, uh, and by the way, it looks like two of the lots further down are maybe bigger than yours. But what's your timeframe on this? Because it would, it would help if it, if it sequenced better with, with our discussions about what we, what a new Morocco looks like. Yeah, there's multiple roads in and out of this site. There's questions about whether the new Morocco is on the site or not. You know, it might, it might change if we were having this conversation in five years, for instance.
Yeah, so we're not really in any particular rush to get this done. The good news is that we have the structure there that we've put some work into and we're happy with, you know, how it is from a, you know, rental perspective and all that. So we're not in any kind of monetary rush to get this done. But at the same time, I'm not sure if doing this in 15 years is, is particularly interesting to us. You know, we, we'd like to, um, we'd be open to anything, you know, when it comes down to it. But no, we're not, this doesn't need to be done. I put in spring of 2025 there, but it doesn't need to be done by then. It doesn't even need to have been started by then. We're just, you know.
Yeah, and I should, and I should say, I said for 15, but I'll be back here.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Nixon?
Thank you, thank you, Dan, for the presentation. You've got two members of this school committee who are either current or former Morocco parents. I was a Morocco parent for, I think, 15 or 16 consecutive years. And I, I must tell you, I've actually witnessed some of the challenges, particularly in the winter season, when the existing property owners are trying to back out of their driveway during pickup and drop off. We've had some close calls. There's been, I've actually heard from some precinct one and precinct two members with concern about this request, given the nature of snow clearing. So DPW clears the snow on the sidewalks, but of course homeowners may hire a plow to come in and then that snow winds up back in the sidewalk. And, but, but you're, you're, given you're a developer, I, I just want, you know, the Vitrono team to kind of understand kind of where I, where I sort of sit on this as, as early as I have the opportunity to say so. Cause I think it can kind of help your redevelopment ideas. I, I welcomed the question that came from Mr. Hopcroft, which was this idea about what about an easement on your Irving-faced frontage? In other words, could you look at a development at the back of the lot? And then what you have is some shared access to a driveway onto Irving Street. I definitely have concerns about precedent that we would set here. And I'm going to share just briefly, this actually is the GIS map that I just pulled up. My understanding, and this goes back to when we actually put in the, the newer sidewalk, that is, I'm going to say on the Wolverne or Stonem side of Bates Road, if you can see my cursor. We put in a newer sidewalk here, really kind of during COVID, actually, um, to, to help sort of address the pedestrian needs. When we did that work, my understanding was confirmed at the time that the public way kind of ends right here, where this line crosses the road. Similar actually to the condition we have at the end of, of Tufts Road. And this has also been shared publicly several times. The actual bus loop is technically, you know, not part of the public way. I think, you know, it's a fair point. You do have some other property owners along Irving Street whose frontage is really narrow. Who might, um, have a more difficult time putting in a, a, a driveway apron request, but you've got others with, with quite a bit of frontage. And my concern about precedent is not really just here in Morocco, but we have, we have other abutters at other school, elementary schools in the district that could actually come in and make the same request. So, um, I take a, a just candidly, a dim view of this. It, it's not something I would support. I, I would come back to that, the, the comment that was just made a moment ago. When, as we look at kind of what the new Morocco might be, this road might actually go away. We're going to really kind of wipe the slate clean. Once upon a time, there was access to the Morocco School off of Irving Street. I'm, I'm trying to highlight that here. That's still there today. I think we have a steel gate, a couple of boulders there. But, you know, back in the seventies and maybe even early eighties, this was an access onto the site. You know, will a new Morocco consider access off of Irving and discharge onto Tufts or vice versa? Might the street we have today go away in lieu of, you know, an expanded parking lot? Could the existing parking lot today become like a new area for play structures for Morocco? So we really don't know. And I'm, I'm just, I'm feeling like it's not in our interest to start granting rights that would sort of frankly limit, um, our, our ability as we kind of contemplate what that could look like. But, um, I mean, I certainly appreciate, if I were in your shoes, I'd be looking to maximize the value of that parcel myself. And would, and I am aware in Winchester of other properties where two different structures do have an easement. So they kind of share a common driveway, as I think Mr. Hopcroft was suggesting. So I'd certainly, I'd certainly encourage you to explore that. I mean, I think to the, to the degree you can create additional housing, particularly if one is an affordable unit, that's great because that kind of serves the needs of the housing production plan. But, um, my concern here is that it introduces others' concerns or hazards or limitations that I'm just not prepared to support.
Thank you.
Ms. Bergstrom? I'm actually concerned if, um, the developer builds on that property and we don't have a driveway on Bates, because that discharges those four units onto Irving Street, which can increase the public safety and, um, traffic further on Irving Street. Whereas if we have, because that would be eight units, then all dispersing onto Irving Street. The current driveway that's there is, I, I don't think an SUV can even pass for the amount of space that's, um, currently there on that small driveway that comes out on Irving. I've driven by both pieces of property. So I think, um, I would be interested in some public safety analysis of that as well. I think that there is some, um, interest in balancing, would be interest in balancing, the number of people that would be, um, living in those units and the cars between both of those streets, sort of, um, sharing the load of that. I'm also going to say that I'm a huge public housing advocate and affordable housing advocate. And I think that we're all going to need to make concessions in this town with the number of properties we have left for affordable housing. And nothing is going to be ideal. No piece of property is going to be ideal. No setting is going to be ideal. And if we want to increase high-density and affordable housing in this town, we, we're all going to need to make some hard choices that aren't ideal. I don't find a curb cut on Bates to be necessarily a precedent setting. I think we take each, we would take each property as it is. If we would choose to allow the curb cut for these four units and it puts too much traffic for us on Bates, that is the reason right there to not allow any further curb cuts on Bates. I, I think we need to do what we need to do to help people be able to afford to live in Winchester. And if it's a curb cut in a driveway, that seems like a small concession to me, um, to be able to do that. And I don't think we can wait on Morocco to make these decisions. It's going to be another long, long number of years before we know what we're doing with Morocco and that property, when people can be living in that school and walking their kids to Morocco. With each development that we turn down like this for something as simple as a driveway and a curb cut, we're making Winchester less affordable to people. So I do think we need to keep the minds, uh, we need to keep the, the needs of the school and the school district in mind, but, um, we're all going to have to give a little to get a little, I think, when we talk about affordable housing in Winchester. So that's, that's my personal feeling on, on the affordable housing. I think a fair first step is to allow, um, them to, uh, allow Dan to find out where Bates Road ends. I think that would be a simple request that they've made of this committee. Before we have to make a decision on the curb cut is to find out where Bates. Before we have to make a decision on the curb cut is to find out where Bates Road does end. They had asked. I think, Dan, your first request was for a survey to determine if Bates Road formally ends before your property or after. And. I suggest to this committee today that we allow them to do that survey, because if Bates Road ends. Past their property, then it may not even be an issue for us. So I would say that we don't make a decision on whether to offer a curb cut or not today, but do make a decision on whether we allow them to survey to find that out.
And I just, well, yeah, and I don't think they need our permission to do that. I think they they can do that as a as a property owner. They have access to public documents. I'm not against the survey work, just to be clear.
Dr. Matthews.
So I'm actually, like, my colleague, Mr. Nixon, I'm also a resident in precinct one, and I've I've actually, I'm also a town meeting member. I I've actually had folks reach out about this project from precinct one. I think there is a real concern among families who, you know, are. At the Morocco school about sort of the the precedent setting nature that Mr. Nixon has already raised. And and I share those concerns. I think that. I I'm not going to, we we are obviously time limited, so I'm not going to belabor the point, but I just want to underscore the fact that there is. You know, there are folks in the neighborhood who are aware of this, and there are folks that have concerns that have been shared already. You know, knowing that I'm both a town meeting member as well as a school committee member. So. You know, at this point, I I I share those concerns and I'm not comfortable with moving forward. But, you know, it certainly, as was just stated, it's certainly within anybody's purview to do due diligence work. But but just to to sort of make folks aware where I said, I I, you know, I I share also the concern that's been raised about precedent setting across our schools, because we. You know, we have not just five elementary schools and a middle school and a high school, but we also have, you know, other buildings that have programs in them right now. So it's. Something I'm I'm, you know, sort of obviously very supportive of of affordable housing. But at the same time, I think we have to be very careful, and I I assume that is probably why we've had the vice chair of the planning board, the town planner. And, you know, folks who are involved in in various boards and committees around affordable housing, so. But but right now, I I I have concerns.
Mr. Hopcroft, I'll come back to you. And I see Ms. Bergstrom still has her hand raised. Okay. Thank you. We are in a little bit of a time crunch, so I'd like to move us along, but please, please finish up.
So I just I just wanted to say, you know, I I share Ms. Bergstrom's concerns about housing and affordable housing in town. I I did want to say, you know, and Dan, I appreciate the presentation and and what you're seeking to do. But but what I heard from the developers is that there there isn't a time urgency right now, so it's not like new housing is going to go up tomorrow. And that there might be alternatives, which would be something for the developer and the, you know. And the town, because it's not on school property, to determine whether that was a feasible thing. So I think it's not an urgent thing for us to to address. Right now, anyway. And I do think, you know, I think there's a lot of, you know, variability and and having the flexibility. To do as much, to do whatever we we think is the right thing for the students, for the school. On the new Morocco, which is, you know, around the corner, I think it sounds like. Perhaps even within the timeframe of of before they would get to to this. It might be a totally different thing, as Mr. Nixon said, we might come in and out a different way, and that might be a beautiful little park sitting right there. You know, that we that they could do what they want. Yeah, maybe we give that back, but. But anyway, I I don't feel that there's urgency right now on the part of the developer, and I think there are other options that they can explore. They could certainly do their due diligence and and and. Yeah, and so some, at this point, I don't feel like it's prudent to to grant this, and I don't know. Yeah, so I'll stop there, because I know we don't have a lot of time.
Okay, I believe I'm hearing from the committee that we would just not like to take action on this at this particular point. So respecting that wish. I would, and since several of my opinions were also expressed, then I will just move us along. But thank you very much.
Just quickly, I'm wondering whether or not committee members have other questions, whether they get them to Mr. Barron and he can forward them along.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We appreciate your coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. And let's see, we will move on through the capital planning priorities and the financial report. Dr. Hackett, you had a.
No, you might be.
And we are trying to move along on our timeframe, so I think we might be looking at some of the items after these next two items as. Potentially tabling. So but let's go ahead with the capital planning priorities.
Can I can I give the high school update only because it is germane to the capital discussion we're about to have?
Yes, you may do so.
Okay, I'll I'll share screen quickly. I presume you guys have had an opportunity to review the memo. I'm not going to really dwell on the high school gym reconfiguration and reflooring. If we have time, we can come back to that later. There was a contractor walkthrough today. Mr. Marin, I think, attended with with others, so just making good progress there. What I wanted to touch on is where we stand on the Winchester High School concrete repair and remediation. This is actually germane to the capital priority discussion that we're about to have, given how. The capital planning committee meeting ended late last night. So you all are already aware, we talked about this, I've given you some memos, the EFPBC has authorized some testing at the high school. We have applied two different products. They're both corrosion inhibitors. They've been applied to the underside of the first floor slab. We're giving thirty days for that product to be absorbed into the concrete. At day thirty, we're going to go in and do some cores and send it to the lab. If the if the if the corrosion inhibitor, if either one, these are two different products, if either one of them. Is absorbed, you know, at the right depth, lab results, you know, have already proven this is a very successful approach to. To stop the corrosion that's happening already and to prevent future corrosion. And so this this would likely then be the recommendation, but before we're in a position to recommend this approach, we need to actually test this on the concrete that we have. And that's going on. So you can see the dates that are here. These that this is consistent with what I've shared with you before, perhaps in a little more detail. We're going to get some results back on one product before we're going to have another. What's not changed is that really by mid-August at the earliest, we should have at least a verbal indication from SGH. About the efficacy of one or both of these approaches. And we're really looking forward to hearing this at the EFPBC table. So limiting or stopping corrosion on the first floor slab from below. Is one of the two priorities of the project. The other priority that we need to address is is the remediation and the repair of the top side deterioration. Which happened for a completely different reason, different pathway. We've talked about this before. These are sulfides, these are salts. Or, excuse me, chlorides. So there are some areas where floor is going to have to come up. We're going to use a different product to stop that deterioration. We re-level the floor and put the floor down, but that's not just some hallways. That includes areas like the guidance office where it's carpeted. So the carpet's coming out, some walls will have to come down, et cetera. So. If the surface supply corrosion inhibitor is effective, based on the work done to date. We believe a reasonable project cost to address both the underside and the first floor slab is between one and one point two million dollars. But we weren't, we're going to get that information definitively until after we had our capital discussion today. Momentarily, and we weren't going to get it until the capital planning committee had already gone through and done a preliminary ranking. So our intention has been to kind of keep both the school committee and the select board informed about how this this process is going, with the expectation that maybe at the very end of the summer or early fall. We would have something packaged to be prepared to come forward and say, well, this is what we recommend, and this is what it's going to cost. What I want to share with the school committee tonight, and we we will get into it when we now transition in a moment to our capital requests. Is at the end of last night's capital planning committee meeting, the majority of the committee felt strongly. That, I mean, they appreciate the updates. They do see this as a high priority. They appreciate that we don't yet have the lab results. However. If if we get favorable results, there is strong interest in prioritizing this work. And advocating for the project. So the request came, and and this is literally, it happened late last night. The request was, can we still get a presentation on this project? Can can we see this as a project request? So had some conversations follow up with management, and again, this morning with. Dr. Hackett, Mr. Marin, and Meg White from engineering and planning. And it was felt that it would be, if if the school committee is willing to entertain it, that this could be included in our. List of projects that we would present to capital on the thirty first. I mean, we certainly, this is an important issue we need to address, and if capital feels strongly it needs to be funded, that's not a bad thing. So I was clear with the committee last night that we're not yet to the finish line. The message I heard was, we kind of don't care, because. It has been largely scoped out and and. Let's assume we get favorable results, then we would want to act quickly. So I wanted to brief you all on that. I apologize it's late breaking, but we literally met last night. So this was not something that was on the list that Mr. Marin was bringing forward, because we kind of felt we we would want to button everything up neatly before we acted on it. Given how the conversation went and clear support from management, by the way, on the town side to do just that, I wanted to share that with you. So. I'm going to shut up on that. I hopefully there are not many questions on the concrete itself, because you've gotten a couple of memos from me. If there are, I'm happy to answer questions, but. Madam Chair, I wanted to sort of get that out there, and then maybe we can. Let Mr. Mayor and Dr. Hackett kind of walk through the capital recommendations that were already in the packet for today. And then I think we can, we have that conversation, and then sort of separately, if if we're in agreement with the recommendations from administration, with the information we already had. On a few projects, we can then separately say, so what is our appetite to to throw our support behind the high school concrete work? And where would that fall in the overall pecking order? Is that is that a fair summary, Dr. Hackett, of what we talked about?
Fair and accurate.
Okay. So I'll shut up. Hopefully not many questions.
Sorry for the interruption. Okay. Mr. Marin.
Thank you. I will share. The workbook we have here. Okay, so the school commission should have received. There's a copy that's in your binder review. As Mr. Nixon pointed out, we. Prioritized. A listing of capital projects in this. You're seeing now lives, a revision that includes the concrete repair remediation for the high school. In this format, I believe it's kind of a new old format, Mr. Nixon, that was used in the past, and we've sort of repurposed and updated. That, so you're saying a summary of the overall. Projects where we have presented our district priorities. The estimated project cost here, alignment with our district strategic goals. And then key sort of other areas related to health and safety and community benefits and urgency and cost. So, Mr. Nixon, what would be best to go through? Each one of our rankings or?
Well, I I I think you could, sure, you could either work from left to right, or you could kind of take it in order of priority. I might ask if you take it in order of priority, you might start with Lincoln, because that was, obviously, that was number one in the packet as of last night. And and I think you've just been clear that if we were to consider the high school concrete repair. It looks like what administration is saying, well, then that would be our number one, and it effectively pushes everything down. The one sort of public service announcement I I do want to make, and I'm glad Andrew just mentioned this, this matrix that you're seeing, this rubric. Is something that may be familiar to some of our veterans like Ms. Bergstrom or Ms. Bolinesse. For many, many years. A grid very much like this was was actually part of management's sort of request of department heads. Any capital request came to capital planning with this matrix sort of checked off. Sometime during COVID, that process stopped. I I mean, we still have the process of requests. And for veteran members of capital and veteran department heads. Requests are made and the talking points are still there. So so. Any department head talks about requests in in terms of health and safety mandate, service delivery, whether it's a part of an overall capital plan. And and I think as a capital planning committee, those of us who've been on it for many years have really internalized that. I will say, however, that this spring, there have been some comments, and I think that they're they're incorrect. But some comments have been made that the capital planning committee, for instance, doesn't take into account health and safety. Concerns when ranking its projects. We absolutely do. I went back and unearthed a version of this that I shared with capital planning committee in our first round a couple of weeks ago. And asked if maybe we should go back to using this. There was strong support to do it. We had a liaison from the select board at the meeting who had not seen it before, who thought it would be very helpful. So there have actually, there's been a subsequent request to share this matrix with the chair and vice chair of the select board. I've done that. And I did share with capital last night that we would be actually including this as part of our discussion today, and I think that that was well received. So. This is going to be brand new for some of you. For others, it's going to seem vaguely familiar. So Andrew, just take it away.
Great. And I'll add that the. So the structure here, this is in alignment with the original memo you received from myself and Mr. Nixon. So if you read top to bottom, it's sort of left to right here. And then this row is the prioritization that we've settled on from the district side. So Mr. Nixon already spoke to the concrete repair. So number two is Lincoln flatwork. Number three are district access controls. Four and five are security camera upgrades in additions at the high school in McCall. And six being the carriage house roof. And seven is the district courier van. That's currently not operating. And then, as I note on our memo, we removed a few projects, Ambrose phones, Morocco flooring, McCall kitchen. And high school physical security, as we have identified sort of other areas to fund those projects. Or some more areas that we need to vet and kind of further look into those efforts. So that's what's in front of you today. I'll go through in more detail if there's questions or.
I just clarify, Mr. Barron means when he says it's currently not operating, the the van, it will never operate again. It's gone.
Yeah, rest in peace. Yes.
Can I ask you, Andrew, can you zoom out a little bit, or maybe just scroll down a little, so just so the committee and other members of the public can just see what else is on the bottom of this grid, because it goes down a bit?
Sure. Can you see that? Okay.
Yeah. Mr. Marin, I just had a real quick question about the the van. I saw in the write-up that the funding was for a van and charging infrastructure. Would we be able to share charging infrastructure with our food services van at the high school? And not have to spend as much?
Yeah, there is a potential to do that. We can also potentially. Add a charger onto some of that infrastructure that we've installed here at the high school. It's it's currently not parked at the high school. It's parked at, it's typically parked at the DPW barn, because there's some shared use there. But it's something we can evaluate, what the best process is, and we. It would kind of most likely mirror. The current use of that food service van too, where we're typically charging every four days, kind of as it goes about twenty miles per day. So that's a good point is where they, there's a potential to offset the schedule there.
Ms. Bergstrom. Mr. Marin, could you pull up the prioritize list for me for a moment? And thank you. And I just want to say, Mr. Nixon, I'm so glad to see this come back again. This is. I think both what capital and the select board have been looking for, as well as Fincom and other people, is. A way to not only identify our capital needs, but rank them based on sort of all the other. Factors that go into how they've landed at that spot. So I appreciate the needs grid coming back along with the priorities. So just wanted to comment on that first. I I completely agree with Mr. Nixon and administration that the high school work should take priority. It's structural. And I feel like we need to preserve the asset of the high school as much as we can. I. I mean, I personally would just flock five and six on this. I, while I understand the carriage house roof is a necessary need for. The structural integrity of that building, I do also believe we're, I feel the same about this as I do on the Mystic School, that we're embarking on a master planning process and. We really need to identify the future use of that building, since it was overwhelmingly turned down by town meeting for use as a central office space. I think that we need to reevaluate what our use of that building is going to be in the future before we invest any more money of it. So I personally would just. So I personally would just flop five and six. I know we almost never get to five and six. So that's almost a moot point, but I'd just throw that out there. And I think, given what Mr. Nixon just brought up about the late breaking news on the high school, I would add a number seven and just add in an anticipated category of McCall and Ambrose roofs. I think that we need to not lose track of the fact that we're still doing the assessment on those roofs. And this looks like they're not a priority for us, whereas based on those the assessments that are due, Mr. Nixon, I believe you said at the end of August, they may rise in that priority list for us as we learn more about them.
So if I can just jump in on that one.
Otherwise, I'm happy to approve this.
Yeah, I I just did to clarify, and and I'm glad you said that because this goes back a couple of memos ago. So that design development work on the McCall and Ambrose roofs, as well as town hall in the library, is coming into the engineering and planning department within the next week and a half, and then there's a vetting period. So tho- those roof requests will still come in, but they're actually coming in on behalf of Pete Lawson in the DPW. So they are absolutely coming, but they're not on our advocacy list because they fall more into the repair and renewal sort of wheelhouse of DPW. And we're relying on them to kind of not only make the case, but also bring whatever updated information they have to capital when it comes in. So that that and we have been actually explicit in writing that we're not, we're not abdicating on those. We're not saying we don't support it, but we we don't have that information and we know that DPW is going to continue to advocate. The only other comment I would make on that is Bergstrom is we we have said previously, and based on everything we know today, the McCall roof seems a higher priority than Ambrose, just given the the poor and some of the complexities. And so unless something comes in from Gail that's different, we would presume that that's still the case. So so those tho- that case is still being made to capital.
Right, and I understand that, Mr. Nixon, I just, this is a memo coming from us to capital. And if there's somebody to reflect that in this memo that, again, I think that I think you're famous for saying, tell them once, tell them again, tell them yet again. I think that indicating that the school committee's priority would be those roots, supporting the DPW in those efforts in any way, since it is our school buildings. I'd just like to see it reflected in here somehow.
Can I ask you to turn your camera off just because you're glitching a little bit? But I I heard what you had to say.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Did you, were you able to understand that?
Yeah, I I I got. Yeah.
Okay, great.
Dr. Matthews.
I am hoping I will not glitch as well, but maybe it's maybe it's a virus. So I I just wanted to actually, I I guess I have a question for Chris and Andrew about the Morocco flooring. It says here, district administration will work with town management to determine available funding. And it's a fairly short money project in the greater scheme of things. And I just don't know, you know, are there particular things you've contemplated? Because all of the the stuff that we've recommended for removal, there's an alternate source or a sort of resolution proposed. And that's the one that doesn't actually have a clear resolution. So I just wanted to know more about that and and what you'd contemplated for for that item.
You want to take that, Andrew, or do you want me to speak to it?
Yeah, would you like to start?
Well, so, yeah, I what I would say, this goes back to our Morocco life extension plan, as you remember. So town meeting approved it, and then we went to the voters. The debt exclusion override, as a general practice in town, is very vague language. So it the the specifics about how the money can be allocated really fall on town meeting. So the Morocco life extension plan, as we presented it to town meeting, was for things like the boiler replacement, the roof repair replacement, electrical service upgrades, and then some some supplemental plumbing work. That work, the work so far has come in under budget, which is great. We we delete the plumbing stuff was literally like priority four, so we held off on that till till that was sort of closed out and understood. We did not present any flooring replacements to town meeting, Dr. Matthews. But so the thinking is that what we could do here, because we have funds available under the Morocco life extension plan, we could actually come back to town meeting and ask them to reconsider, you know, the the funding. We've done this. This happens actually pretty regularly. And even we just did something, we just did that actually on on Lynch. We we went back to town meeting because remember we had money left over from the feasibility study? And we asked town meeting if we could just take that money and then put it towards the project. So we do it from time to time. It it's an ongoing conversation that Mr. Marin and Dr. Hackett and I are having with with management. You know, management tends to take a pretty sort of conservative view of these things, but which is to be appreciated. I think it's an ongoing conversation, you know, with bond counsel, but I think our position would be, we would like to to pursue that, see if we can go back to town meeting because we have some money there. Andrew, did I summarize that right?
Perfect.
That's great, thank you, appreciate that and I'm glad to have that on 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 public record, so to speak.
Yep. I would only add to to Ms. Bergstrom's comment about flipping five and six. So, you know, we, following the town meeting vote, there are some other public entities or quasi-public entities that once again have expressed interest in the carriage house. It has a hole in the roof, so this is really just about taking care of that, so the building sort of stops its decay and nothing more. So I think that was really sort of the reason why I think it comes in above the courier van. Yeah.
I guess. And I'd also just add, oh, sorry, Ms. Bolines, I'd just add to that. I, Mr. Dr. Matthews, you may have not been with us when we talked about the Morocco flooring before, but we had talked about that there was money in the life extension plan, as Mr. Nixon had indicated that it might be available for use for this. So I'm glad to hear that that's the direction that we're going to take on that and pursue it. As as Dr. Hackett had indicated previously, the kindergartens and first grades in particular could really use some new carpet. So I appreciate that that being reflected in here.
Yeah, it's just to your point about the the memo, you know, being a statement. Wanted to make sure that that was on reg. It's not that it's all the way at the bottom of every list. It's just that there's an alternate potential method to solve that, that, that.
Exactly, yep.
And I just had a question with respect to the district courier van. And I guess it's used somehow, what we, since, since it is resting at peace. What are we using as an alternative?
Hand delivery by foot. Bring a donkey in on Thursdays, but that thing is cantankerous, so we don't like to do that too often. Sorry, you probably have a better answer.
Yeah, we're looking into carrier pigeons as well. But I think we, so right now being some, being summer, it's a little less traffic in Interoffice Mail going around and tuning technology around. And so the person DPW that does that route is borrowing an older vehicle from DPW that somebody used right now. But when it, we're not sure the longevity of that vehicle in the future there. So right now, it's kind of, we're just getting by, we're kind of like one day a week right now. But typically during the school year, we're running about twice a week with that courier pickup. And then there's more heavier use around technology and moving equipment around that we need the larger vehicle for.
So we would end up renting a vehicle, right, Andrew? I mean, if we had to for those kind of deliveries.
Yep, we can rent, or we have you know, contracts with local movers that can assist us with more kind of coordinated moves for equipment.
And in the scheme of all of the priorities, when we get down to the numbers or numbers five and six, then the opinion is that carriage house roof would be before, would still come before the district courier van.
Yeah, correct, that's how it's presented here. And so you start to add plus one to each of these where we have Lincoln as number one now.
Right, right, right. Yes, I failed to say that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so so I just weigh in and say, yeah, I'm I'm generally supportive of this with the high schools number one, right? I wonder, maybe it's better to have the granularity of, you know, three and four being separate items here. But I wonder if it makes sense to roll those into one, although maybe it's harder to get them approved. And I also wonder on the the courier van, I I kind of agree where there's an alternative there. I know it's well past its due date to be replaced, but I'm and I'm all in favor of more electric vehicles and more charging. But I wonder if splitting the charging from the van. You know, because it seems that for, it it seems that, well, I'd like to have another charger in district. You know, the immediate problem is is having the van. And and it seems there's chargers at DPW and at high school, so I wonder if that might make it easier. I don't know how much that saves because it may be adding a charger onto an existing charger for the cheap because all the wiring is already in the ground. But but if it saved a significant amount of money, you know, like, does it drop that eighty to fifty or just drop it to like seventy five? I don't know.
Yeah. Can I ask Mr. Marin to just speak to the phases, the fact that the McCall security cameras, we've already, there in one school, there's already some work that's been done. In another, it's an initial ask, and I think that weighed into some of the calculus from administration.
Sure. First, I miss Mr. Hopcroft's point, so that charging infrastructure in that eighty thousand is about seventy five hundred dollars. So that's what that would be reduced by. So it is significant there. And then that AK is also inclusive. So we would have to pay for the vehicle, but then we get about, expect about fifteen thousand in reimbursements that would be received. And that was sort of like go back to the town as part of that project.
That's on top of it. Sorry, so that that would be a ninety five thousand dollar expense or?
Yeah, it's a, it's inclusive of that. So this is the upfront cost, and then we would see that after in arrears, sort of, so. The town spends, yeah, the full amount, and then they would get reimbursed for the money spent.
So then that is sixty five, and then it could be fifty something if you took the charging off of that too.
Correct, yeah. And on the security, so have go back to, if you remember, this sort of last summer and early fall, they were deploying those cameras at McCall. And so that was really phase one, and we got to sort of those critical areas of the main hallways and the outside perimeter. And this because sort of phase two is adding to that. So part of that project, well, the phase one, we couldn't afford all the cameras, but we did a lot of the wiring work. So say out of the twenty four cameras deployed, then we ran additional lines and wiring to several other areas in the school. And then this would then pay for the cameras and the licensing. And it adds to some of those additional areas that weren't included, such as some of the stairway corridors and some other corners of the building. And the high school is more of a, there's some cameras that are offline, not functioning. And then adding some additional areas where there are blind spots that we've sort of discovered walking through with facilities and the school resource officer here.
Can I make an inside baseball just observation, Mr. Hopcroft, is that inevitably, when we go through the capital ranking process, there's always a, there's always a last project that we can afford. And then there's always something right below the line that capital would really like to do. And in some years, we sort of split the baby and we asked, well, can we do part of it now? And we do part of it another year. If you look at how this ranking wound up from administration, it's interesting because the high school security cameras, you know, back right up against the McCall security cameras. So if you combined it, which we could do, it becomes a bigger ask. And and so the threat there is, well, maybe it doesn't get funded. So I think the thinking here is in splitting it. What what Mr. Marin is doing is he's saying if 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 he and Dr. Hackett had a preference, they would prefer the high school, which I think works in our favor, only because not knowing how this is all going to go, maybe splitting these two is the way to go because we might get one and not the other. But only because they wind up side by side in the overall priority list.
Got it, okay, thank you. So I'm comfortable with this list as it is.
But with the high school being number one, is that what you were saying too?
Yes.
Okay.
So.
I'm happy to make a motion if you'd like it, Ms. Bolines. I'd like to accept the capital priority list as presented. And with the moving the high school concrete project to the first position and each of the concurrent priorities moving down one.
I'll second that.
All in favor, Mr. Nixon?
I'm going to vote aye, but I'd also.
Ms. Bolines, before you take, I was going to say, before you take the vote, can we just make sure that that also includes the notation that we do support the roof projects at Ambrose and McCall and clarify the funding on the Morocco flooring as Mr. Matthews suggested.
That is just what I was going to say.
That can be done, as you wish.
Aye.
So go ahead, take that vote now.
Mr. Nixon. Ms. Bergstrom.
Aye.
Mr. Hopcroft.
Aye.
Dr. Matthews.
Aye.
The chair of it's aye, and the vote is unanimous. Okay, Dr. Dr. Hackett, you have your hand up again.
Just commenting on just the time, and I I believe a couple of people indicated they've got to get out of here, head our sub. So just as we go through what's left on the agenda, we don't need to get to the breakfast and lunch fees today. We don't need to get to the student opportunity act only in that it is a first reading. So I would, if committee members had any questions, they could get them to me before the next meeting. We will need eventual approval, and I did note on the agenda that Dusty's already approved the plan. So it's a little bit perfunctory, although I can send an amendment if there was anything substantive that the committee wanted me to amend. And then I would just recommend that I can, you know, the presentation or the self evaluation isn't isn't required as part of the process. I I can get information to the committee members and which would, and then they can reach out to me if they have individual questions. As you know, and has has been presented already by the chair. We are, you're still going to be doing an evaluation of me at the next meeting on August eighth. So that then really you're doing the individual evaluation of me, getting them to, getting that to the chair, who is doing a consolidated evaluation, which is the official evaluation for for the file, so to speak. And then I would just, you know, whatever you want to do, it's not urgent to take up the change to the professional development day in March. But I did want to bring to your attention that we were notified after the, after the calendar had been approved that the date that we had picked for the professional development day in March, actually to accommodate the town election is a required MCAS testing day at the high school level. So we we can't do a PD day then, the students and staff will all be in session. So the recommendation would be to move that PD day back to the fourth, which is where we have historically kept it. That's really the only change on that, if 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 you want to, if you want to consider that, but.
But can I just ask a question? Are you having conversation, I know the town clerk was out for a little while, but is back. Is there still conversation to be had with the clerk and management about having our local municipal election on Saturday? I realize when it, when it is co-located with a state primary or federal election, we're not driving the bus. But it it, there was some early, when when we first voted to kind of shift the schedule at the town meeting level, there was an understanding about having elections on Saturday. So where does that stand?
My understanding and my recollection of that was that the select board needs to vote prior to some date in December, I believe, to have that happen. So I will be letting the town clerk know that we're going to have to have a full day of school in session. And would request that, just given that, I would request that we we put it in for the select board to consider that.
Well, that that was actually going to be my suggestion is given the information you've now received. I mean, I I don't know that you really need our blessing to do it, but I would encourage you to reach out to the board and town clerk and just say, we got some new information. You know, we we need to re- rethink the the date of the election, and perhaps that includes doing it on a Saturday.
That was the next step.
And then it sounds like you, so you're you're willing to meet with individual members to discuss yourself eval?
I am. Yeah.
Which I'm okay with for me personally.
Bye, guys.
Dr. Hackett, would you like to can you hear me? Dr. Hackett, would you like that for organization that we have done of you ready to discuss too often, we meet with you regarding the evaluation that we turn into the chair?
I missed a little bit of what you said in the middle there.
Sorry. In the past, you've often invited us if, for the evaluation that we turn into the chair.
Yes, yes, yes.
For us to meet with you as well. Would you like us to try to combine that meeting? Discuss yourself eval and have our.
I'm willing to meet with you as many times as long as you would like. I'm willing to meet with you as many times as, as long as you would like, but that would be great.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, Madam Chair, my only, my only other concern, just given the time, is I know we had the end of year financial report on the agenda today.
I was just looking at that.
There is a, you know, I, I've been harping on this idea of prepaying tuitions, which we're allowed to do by law, gives us some flexibility in the subsequent fiscal year. So is there, you know, before we cut ourselves too short today, is, is, is there anything that's time sensitive with respect to any admin recommendation on prepaying tuitions, given the availability of, you know, unencumbered funds?
I'll just, I'll answer for, yes. I mean, it would be good for you to take action today. We don't necessarily need approval to do the pre-pay for spent tuitions, but, um, we are looking to close out, um, and what you're really looking at is the, um, the return of, I believe, I don't have it in front of me, but, um, a little over seven thousand dollars to the town with that action. So, um, we are counting on candidly on prepaying, uh, special education tuitions and just for everyone's, um, benefit, that it, that it's the law, law require, allows us to do that. And we're talking about tuition, prepaying tuition for summer months. So it would be July and August, but also in September. The hundred and fifty thousand dollars is not the total amount of all the district, uh, tuition costs that we incur and will incur, uh, for those three months. But it is, um, we had budgeted, uh, with the idea that, um, we were going to likely need to do some prepayment, uh, hoping that we could, depending on how the year went. Um, and if you recall, uh, we have been, um, we've been utilizing ester funding the last three years or so for special education tuition costs to help offset budget costs. And I, you know, the good news for that is I look around the state and I even have read some national news around there are school districts who are really struggling to, um, wean themselves off of ester funding. They've, um, because of implementation of programs, of hiring of staff that they've not been able to, uh, bring back into their budget. You know, and as you know, um, those funds really helped us get through the last, uh, the last few years. So, um, and as you also know, we talked about really cut, getting ourselves to a point where we needed to increase our operating budget, special education tuition line, understanding that we were going to be faced with this situation and that we would need to, uh, we would need to have those funds budgeted. But, um, so, yeah, you know, anything can change, but, uh, we are in much better condition with that line. This year going into next year as well, that we have been in the past with, with one small exception, so.
So just for the record, I'm totally supportive of prepaying tuitions. I think I, I raised this issue because under a previous superintendent, you know, there was once a report late in the summer that, you know, there'd been a large reversion to the town, and we hadn't even had that conversation yet, and it felt like an opportunity was lost. So, you know, once upon a time, I think we had kind of formalized this discussion at this time of year. I think it's a good conversation to have. I, I understand your position. It doesn't technically require a vote of the committee, and I'm not suggesting it has to, but I'm, I think it's good that we're doing it.
No, absolutely. And I didn't mean to imply that either. And I think really it hasn't happened the last several years because of what I just said. Those have been ester funds that, um, are not subject to the fiscal, um, the fiscal year, hadn't been.
If I could just add the, this is a projection in front of you. We're still, I'm still trying to land this plane, so to speak, um, going through numbers. And as we finalize F twenty-four, um, and, you know, there's a lot of moving parts still. So we're, we're trying to finalize by this month, July, and we have until about mid-August with the, with the town to, to final adjustments there. But this is our best projection as of this week. So, thank you.
I'll envision a great big draft over it for you, Andrew.
We're so, I'm so confident that he's right, that we're, it's going to be spot on, so.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so I think I missed tacking this on to the end of the discussion about the evaluation. So Dr. Hackett will be reaching, and I know Dr. Hackett had said he will be reaching out to each of you individually. And then just as a process reminder, and I think Ms. Bergstrom alluded to this, if you have questions, you can talk with him at that point. Also, once you've completed your individual evaluations, you can share those with him and also have, have more discussion at that point. I am asking for the individual evaluations to come back to me, um, for consolidation on July twenty-ninth, which is a Monday. And then I will work on and complete the consolidated evaluation by August fifth, which is also a Monday. And I will share that with Dr. Hackett. And then we will work towards August eighth for doing the final summative evaluation with Dr. Hackett. So just to have the dates at the top of your heads. And with that, just coming back to anticipated future agenda items. We continue to have the elementary literacy update on the, on the table. We will have subcommittee updates, a fees discussion for future years, twenty-four, twenty-five subcommittee assignments, um, and summative evaluation. Future meeting dates, the next meeting date is August eighth. Oh, Ms. Bergstrom, I believe you had an announcement, so.
I did. I just, that's okay, right before we go, because I know I'm on a ten win two today. I apologize for that. Um, I just wanted to let everybody know that on Monday, July twenty-second at six-thirty at the Winchester Public Library, there's going to be a short introductory meeting on the CPA, um, campaign. The town, um, and the select board discussed that elected officials are able to participate in that if they're interested, as long as town resources aren't used. So, um, this will be the official kickoff meeting towards that. So if anyone is interested in attending, I just wanted to let everyone know that was happening. If you have any questions, you can, um, contact Mike Benkorn or Anthea Brady on the select board. They'll be running the meeting.
Great. Thank you so much for that.
Sure.
Let me just see, future meeting dates, we have August eighth. I cannot recall if we had actually decided on a time for that. There's a part of me that thought it was in the evening.
Yeah, actually I had it for, I had it for ten o'clock on my calendar, but.
Yeah, I have it at ten o'clock as well.
I had it as a morning meeting.
Ten AM.
Morning works for me.
Dr. Matthews, ten AM.
Mention that, as you have discussed, if we needed to bring you back together for some reason between, you know, not, wouldn't be probably now in the eighth, but, um, from the eighth to the beginning of the school year, we just want to remind everyone to, um, we'll walk around your calendars as best we can. I'm not anticipating anything in particular, but, um, there's a bit of a stretch there, so.
So, so to answer your question, um, yes, the, I also had it as a morning meeting, but I'm flexible if, if that needs to be changed. I mean, it, I, if there's something on your schedule, um, we, we should certainly discuss that, um, but I, I had it for ten.
I'm fine with ten AM. I just had a vague recollection of hearing it other times, so, okay, but thank you. All right, so ten AM. And then also I'll work with, uh, Beth Rudolph and, uh, Ms. Prior from the select board on finding dates that might work for a joint meeting with the select board in late August. With that, I just accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved. So moved. We're seconded.
All in favor, uh, Dr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom? Mr. Hopcroft?
Aye.
Aye, the chair votes aye, and the vote is unanimous. So thank you so much. We'll adjourn at one thirty-eight PM. Thank you.
Happy summer.
Thanks, everyone. Good to see you.
Happy summer, and thank you, WinCam, as always.